I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
... Well, we see all here this evening, we started a roll call just as we know this is about.
On very much the present day, we do have a warrant.
Could you in the gym, of course, I told you, you can consider that resolution a bit, uh, granted, there's 21, 37, I think, with a, uh, final act in the matter, which , uh, so we've got additional order, we want to do a little bit of, um, we've got motion. Uh, first, uh, in the session. Mr. President, would you say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, all. We've got the city council minutes for, uh, made for. Concerned with those minutes. Now, we're going to go on to the exception minutes for the, uh, the only concerned with those minutes, maybe, uh, there are not, well, not those as well. We're going to be special to the council minutes for me also. And, uh, there. Not, well, not those as well. We're going on to the bills. We're going to, uh, basically, uh, I should see if there are. Sir. Is there a motion to move the bills?
Okay, President.
What up?
One second.
You're off with the Senate. Any discussion? Mr. President, would you say aye?
Aye.
Aye, everybody vote. We're going to the regular legislature reports for December, January, January, December 2020, January 30th. Discussion of those, uh, thoughts. I'll make that question. Second. Okay. First. Discussion. Mr. President, would you say aye?
Aye.
Uh, we vote. The council comments.
There's nothing that I can add.
Okay, sir.
I have nothing. What? I just, Commander Redd, it's pretty clean up, so, I'm only going to, uh, just, uh, place over my evening thing, um, to take care of it. And also, voice soccer, we need to, first time I heard the state soccer, so.
And voice for distracting, sir, this name, this, uh, session.
Last week was, um, National Police Week. I'd just like to recognize our police force and the wonderful job they do, especially in light of some of the things that happened in Casper this week. I mean, hearing about those and hearing about stuff around the nation, cops do a heck of a job and we, we have some of the best, so, just like to recognize them.
Well, I guess the only thing that I don't have, man, is I don't know if anybody recognizes what today is.
Oh?
Yeah, yeah. It's important. Today is the fourth birthday on Thursday, your rep, uh, now, hang on. So, is it a press, is it a press report yet or what? So, we have, uh, but anyway, that, uh, little tidbit, Americans. We'll move on. Our public hearings and special orders, we need to start there with a public hearing to consider a transfer of a liquor license. I just go, I suspect we are hearing, officer.
I will, Your Honor. I'm Dennis Bowe. I'll conduct the public hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to consider the transfer of a retail liquor license from Frotton Enterprises LLC to Fast Stop 1138, Inc., for the facility known as Last Chance, which is out on Highway 150 and in the corner of Aspen Grove Drive. This application has been reviewed by the City Clerk's Office and the staff of the Wyoming Liquor Commission, determined to be complete. Notice of this hearing has been published in a newspaper as required by statute. All those who wish to speak at this hearing will need to step to the podium, state their name and mailing address, and they may be asked questions by members of the council. The issues at this hearing are set forth in Section 4-9 of the City Code, which in summary require that the council will not approve the transfer of the license if the vicinity in question is already being served by adequate liquor licenses. So, sir, are you here on behalf of Fast Stop? Would you approach the podium for me, please? I need you to state your name for the record.
My name is Robert Wilcox.
And is your mailing address, what is your mailing address?
P.O. Box 150545, Ogden, Utah, 84415.
And why don't you go ahead and explain to the council what is going to change, if anything, about the operation at the Last Chance?
The only thing that will change, we're gonna, gonna do anything better than they have, we're gonna try to do things a little different, we're going to, nothing in terms of product selection, all that'll stay the same, we're, we're a little bit larger, we have several stores, and, uh, we have the, the infrastructure to, to really take this to the next level someday. But right now, all we want to do is, we're excited to be in Evanston and this is how we're getting here.
Excellent.
Good to hear.
Is there anything else you want to tell us about yourself or your operation?
Our operation is, uh, it's a company called Fast Stop Travel Centers. We own and operate stores in Idaho, Utah, Wyoming, Colorado, and Nebraska. Uh, we're a fairly new company. Our entire objective is to pay back for all the good things that have happened to us in our lives. So, we go in, we create jobs, we make lives better for the, our employees, we have about 400. We pay, uh, medical, we pay 100% vision, dental, we buy them life insurance, and we try to beat or be higher than anybody else in our industry in the area to make a difference in their lives. And whatever profits are left after that, we go buy another one. We don't take it, we don't, we don't keep it.
Sounds good. Sounds, sounds great. We're, we're glad to have you.
We're excited to be here.
Thank you.
Any, any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak at this hearing? Your Honor, there is no one else who wishes to speak, so unless there are questions from the council, I'm going to close this hearing.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Bowe, thank you. Now, I guess we need to consider a motion to approve this transfer of liquor license. Mr. Perks?
I'll second it.
Excellent.
I'll second it.
Mr. Welling with a second. Is there any discussion?
Just glad to have you here.
Yeah, so there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved, thank you, and welcome to Evanston, I hope it's a raving success for you. We'll go on to our consent agenda, we've got two items there. You want to visit about them separately or together, what's your pleasure?
Don't matter, we're together.
We've got a street closure, an open container request by the Urban Renewal Agency, I suspect you're, come tell us what, uh, what the urban renewal folks are up to.
I'm here. Do I need to state my name and my address?
Please.
Leslie Lunsford, 141 City View Drive in Evanston.
Thank you.
Um, I'm here on behalf of the Urban Renewal Agency to request a street closure and open container permit for June 12th on Main Street from Ninth Street to Harrison. In place of the renewal ball this year, we're going to have a street party. Um, we really weren't sure what the renewal ball would look like this year, and we gathered up some people, and I was ready to just have an online auction after the year that we've had, and overwhelmingly, the group thought we should have a street party and call it, um, the theme is come together, and after the year that we've had, we feel like everybody's going to be ready to come out and celebrate. So, we are requesting closure from 1:00 PM to midnight, and that will provide us time to set up in the afternoon and not interrupt First Bank, because their drive-throughs open that, um, till 1:00, and then we'll get everything cleaned off the street by midnight. We'll have a band playing and we'll, um, but they'll be off the street.
Excellent.
Um, oh, one other thing I wanted to say was if anybody here is not following on Facebook, Evanston Urban Renewal Agency, please follow it. We are still going to have an online auction, there's already announcements about this event on the Facebook page, and if you can share it and comment it, then the word will spread around faster.
Excellent. Questions for Ms. Lunsford?
Any questions? Do I, do I stay here and ask that?
I think we're okay.
I assume you're charging to attend or not?
We are, we're, we're only going to have 200 prepaid tickets available at $40 apiece, they'll be available at, uh, probably about three places in town, and, and of course, though, if people want, that will be for food and the little gifts that we have at the tables, but of course, the band will be playing for anybody who wants to be around and appreciate it.
Fine. Excellent, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone here representing the liquor dealers? Let's talk about those extended hours, if that's okay, there's none, so. Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I'll make that motion, I'll second that.
Mr. Lynch with a motion, Mr. Welling with a second. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? Our consent agenda items are approved. We'll go on to our unfinished business, and we'll start there with ordinance 2103. Mr. Bowe, will you read that title for us, please?
Your Honor, this ordinance of the city amends Section 4-1 of Chapter 4 and modifies the definition restaurant and amends Section 4-24 to provide that restaurant liquor licensees shall have designated dispensing areas and not operate the restaurant as a bar.
Okay. There's been nothing that's changed in the wording here since, since the beginning.
Hasn't been changed at all.
And I've, I don't know if anybody else has, I've had little to no input or feedback or whatever, so, I think we're probably safe, it seems like, to go on, is there any reason we can't move forward? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2103 on third and final reading.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Rothley, Mr. Sellers seconding. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That is approved on third and final reading. We will go on to Resolution 2133. Mr. Bowe, you read that title for us, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the city authorizes the acceptance and execution of a grant agreement with the United States of America through the FAA. It's to obtain grant funds to rehabilitate runway 523, reconstruct runway 523 lighting, and construct taxiway A4 at the Evanston-Uona County Airport.
Mr. Welling, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Gary Welling, 1301 Summit Street, Evanston, Wyoming, here representing the Evanston-Uona County Airport Joint Powers Board. This is a grant agreement for design, for that reconstruction of runway, of our runway. This was applied for, the FAA has wanted to do this, it's on their, on their WASP, what's called their WASP, um, so we applied for this grant. This year's grant, as, as last year's grant, is 100% FAA, no match money for, from sponsor or from YDOT, and so it's for $331,000 and change. The, the construction, this is for design only, the construction grant will come later this summer for upwards of four and a half million for that construction and reconstruction of the runway.
Is this one of those things that it would seem crazy that we not do?
It would seem crazy, yeah, to, to turn that money back. We have till June 18th to decide and sign the grant agreement, but if we could do that sooner, it'd be great.
Excellent. This is one of those grants that comes in email, you sign it electronically, and then it gets forwarded to, and I always have to have somebody walk me through that, because it's not the...
And I, and I will again if you need me to.
And I appreciate it, so.
You guys may have four weeks.
Figure that out, right?
We can get the county email up and go on as, once it, once it, you sign it, it'll go to Dennis, and then it'll go to Eric, and then to Loretta, so.
Okay, well, we'll get, we'll get busy. Is there introduction on this resolution? Mr. Sellers with a motion, Mr. Welling seconding. Is there any discussion?
Just a question.
Please, go ahead.
So, before, they were talking about compaction and stuff and the, the limited, the planes and stuff, that could, will this fix some of that problem?
Um...
Will it make it, make it so we can have more planes, more frequent, bigger planes more frequently land, and, I mean, I don't expect an international airport right now, but, I mean...
You won't, you won't get one, sorry to tell you, you won't get one.
Probably a good thing.
We're too close to, you know, uh, just as background, back in, when they first built up there, uh, the design was to put 12 inches of asphalt up there, and because of budget constraints and monies there, they actually only put nine and a half inches of asphalt, so this will actually bring it up to that 12-inch, uh, design of what, what's supposed to be there, and so it will, it will in theory allow bigger, heavier planes, some of, just a little bit that I know, which is not very much, and just dangerous with some of the stuff I know. It's not necessarily the, the weight of the plane, it's the frequency. Asphalt, as it, it'll absorb a lot of, how I understand it, absorb a lot of weight, but then it's got to heal before it can absorb the same amount of weight, and so it, that's how I was understood, is it, it'll handle a heavier plane, but the frequency is what is really the stress for, for asphalt, so, um...
It's like what semis do to the asphalt.
I, I, yeah, I think so, I think so, but, uh, but it will be brought up to the design that it was first designed at, it's 12 inches, so.
Excellent.
And, and as a side note, we did have our pre-conference hearing yes, yesterday, the day's running together, um, and we had, I think, seven or eight companies up there going through the airport tour and, uh, the project, so we should have, we should get a pretty good price or bid on, on this project. There's actually three phases of it, if the monies come in for all three phases, it will be somewhere around 6 million if the FAA has it, if it stays at the 4 million, we'll, we'll probably only be able to do the one, the first phase, but it is, it's a substantial part of the reconstruction and the lighting, uh, new lighting for the airport.
Excellent. Thank you. Any further discussion? If there's none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That is approved.
Thank you.
Resolution 2134, Mr. Bowe, please.
Your Honor, that, this resolution authorizes the city to enter into an operating agreement with the Evanston Parks and Recreation District, it's for the operation, management, and regulation of recreation within the city.
Thank you. Mr. Ehlers.
I'm Scott Ehlers.
Introduce yourself.
275 Sal Ridge Road, Evanston, Wyoming. Um, I'm here tonight to, to, um, offer an operating agreement between the Parks and Rec. and the city of Evanston. And this, um, you know, the operating agreement that you have in front of you, I mean, it, it covers basically everything that we do or are responsible for throughout the city of Evanston. And if you, I mean, you can look through the first few pages where it, it gives the different, um, operating pieces, whether it's vehicles, or the bus, or whatever we use, but the, the main thing is if you go about five pages from the back end, it lists everything, all the acreage that we continue to mow and take care of and turn green, and everything that is maintained. As I look through these different things, it's, you know, like on the fifth and the last and the sixth and last page, you know, Exhibit A, it, it lists, it lists, if it's green, we're taking care of it for you. That's really what it boils down to. You know, it amounts to roughly, you know, it's about 62 acres throughout the parks part, and it's 120 acres or so out of the golf course, and so it's roughly, you know, it's about 200 acres that, of green grass that we have to mow, fertilize, and take care of, irrigate, and the whole works. And so it's really a lot, um, the thing that I find pretty rewarding and, and fun, quite honestly, is that, um, the, the bare meadows, which used to be a bit of a heartache for, for people, is really, it's really a lot of fun putting things down there right now, you know, so things have really changed for, in a positive manner. And I don't really attribute that to myself, because, um, you know, one thing that's changed, my opinions that I used to have where nobody listened, now they get to listen, so, so that's pretty fun.
Excellent.
And so that, um, in a nutshell, if you've got any questions...
I just, well, I was trying to read through there, is there anything in the, I realize there's a few changes here with the, with the, well, one, I guess, with the properties, but in the, in the bulk of the agreement, I tried to look through that briefly, but is there anything that has changed from last year or the year before?
No, the only thing that we added last year, of course, was the splash pad.
Right.
And bare meadows.
Right.
And so those are two areas that are hot on the list, and we're making those, you know, better every day.
Sure. Okay. Okay. Any questions before we move on?
It's a lot of grass.
It's a lot of grass.
And it is good to see a lot of activity down at the meadows, at the vetting.
We're able to host the regional soccer tournament here, that was pretty cool.
Yeah, it's good, and it's going to get busy again, because we've got, uh, we, we moved from the overthrust area, we moved the T-ball and zuka pitch down there now.
Wow.
And we did that last summer, and so we, with the grant that we got for 40,000, uh, through Kim up at the rec center, we, we've bought things to put down there in a little tot park, and it's really, it's going to get busier.
That's good. Well, is there a introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce, with motion to pass. Sorry, that's your business.
Mr. Lynch, you're seconding. Any discussion?
Just appreciate you guys for...
Absolutely.
... I don't know where Schweitzer Park is, where's that at? Is it by Red Mountain?
It's gotta be below.
I came up where this is.
Why'd you have to bring that up, David?
I don't know, I'm supposed to know where this stuff is. It's got, it's gonna, it's gotta be, oh, it's that little one.
Right there.
Yeah, it's that little one. Yep.
The cemetery block.
Yeah, it is.
You got to learn something.
We all did. So, thanks. Yeah. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved.
Thank you.
And we'll go on to Resolution 2135, Mr. Bowe, you read that title for us, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the city authorizes the execution of an agreement with Myers Anderson Architects, is to provide an assessment and feasibility study for repurposing the historical Wyoming State Hospital campus.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Rock O'Neill with the Community Development Department. This is an agreement with Myers Anderson to execute a, an assessment and feasibility study for Wyoming State Hospital Historic Campus. We've probably put you, this in front of you five or six times at this point, between all of the grants that MICA has written and successfully, uh, received, and agreements with the county, and so on and so forth, it's been two years in the making, but, um, this agreement, uh, is right at the dollar figure of the grants that we have, and that was a combination of city, county, uh, for a state grant, and city and county partnership for a federal grant through the EDA as well. Um, we negotiated it down from six figures to 87 and a half with virtually no change in scope, um, so we're pretty excited about that, that we kept, kept it on budget, and we're, we're pretty much on schedule, so far. Um, so, that's, that's basically it. We'll get this project rolling, and we'll probably ask a few of you to, to join as stakeholders in the project when we start to do the stakeholder meetings and charrettes and things of that nature, so.
And I guess the, the key is here is we're hoping to identify something, some viable effort that can be, that campus can be utilized for.
Yeah, the, the objective is to, is to showcase the feasibility of future use of the campus. The previous studies addressed specific use as, as medical and mental health facilities, and we want to assess the, the infrastructure, the, the, uh, the condition of the buildings as well as, you know, uh, find some sort of institutional user or state user that, that would be a good fit in there, and, and eventually put out an RFI in partnership with the state to get that campus filled up again, because if you, if you visited up there, and maybe we should do a tour with you guys up there, those buildings are really in good shape, and there's a lot of square footage, you have three or four gyms, basketball courts, lakes, trails, you know, 600,000 square feet of, of office space up there, so, we want to put it to good use, and I know it's a weird project in that it's state-owned and operated, but we're going after this as a city-county partnership, so.
Okay, well, we're hoping for good things.
to get that campus filled up again, because if you, if you visit it up there, and maybe we should do a tour with you guys up there, those buildings are really in good shape, and there's a lot of square footage. You have three or four gyms, basketball courts, lakes, trails, you know, 600,000 square feet of, of office space up there, so we want to put it to good use, and I know it's a weird project in that it's state-owned and operated, but we're going after this as a city-county partnership, so.
Okay, well, we're hoping for good things. Any questions for Mr. O'Neill before we move on? Is there an introduction on this resolution? Mr. Rothley, the motion, Mr. Sellers, seconding. Discussion?
Let us know when you want to do the tour.
Yeah?
Yeah, I'll schedule that with Paul. We'll get you guys up there.
Thanks.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. I'll do it, let's go, that's fine.
It's not scary.
Do it.
When I was there...
In the middle of the night. Any further discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That's approved. We'll go on to resolution 2136. Mr. Bowe, you read that title for us, please.
Your Honor, this resolution authorizes the city to make an application for a grant to the Wyoming Energy Authority. It's for Evanston's lighting retrofit project, which is to upgrade the existing fluorescent lights in the machine shop in section one of the roundhouse.
Thank you, sir.
So, good evening, mayor and council. So you have a little bit of a summary in front of you, you should. What this project will do, if we receive the funding, will replace about 650 fluorescent bulbs to LED in the machine shop and the, the first section of the roundhouse. And it could also potentially replace about 10 to 30 ballasts, depending on the condition of those ballasts, so. The cost estimate is around $20,000 for the bulbs, so that includes labor and materials, and then the ballasts are about $100 each, and we're estimating that we'll need to replace 10 to 30 of them, but we're not sure. We haven't got in, gotten in there to look and see what the condition of them are. So around $23,000, $24,000, which is good, because the maximum amount we can go after is $25,000, so, and there is a 10% match, and we will have to be required to do a Y-light energy audit, and that will be no cost to the city. The Energy Authority will pay for that. The current electrical costs annually are about $30,000 a year for both of those buildings, and that includes mostly lights. I'm excited about this grant, because the benefit will be good, we'll have cost savings with this grant application if we get awarded to it. So the annual cost savings will be about 20 to 25%, so $6,000 to $10,000 a year, and it will also extend the life of the ballast by putting LED lights in there, because they don't burn as hot. The LED lights last 50 to 100,000 hours compared to 10,000 hours for the fluorescent, so. The grant application is due May 28th. We will do, if, if things move forward, we'll be required to do that energy audit in June, and then the funding notice will happen in September, whether or not we receive the
This is, this is kind of a fun project, really, because I, I don't think, I guess I should say, very few people recognize the expense associated with utilities for the machine shop and the roundhouse. We've seen some of those, you know, they're, they're fantastic buildings, we're thrilled to have them, we're glad they get used, but quite honestly, they are a very expensive endeavor for the, for the city to undertake as it relates to simple utilities, not to mention the cost of cleaning, maintenance, and other things. So if we can reduce, if we can reduce the, the costs associated with utilities and those buildings, that's, that's a win-win.
Exactly.
Great, great project. Questions for Mika before we move on?
No, 10% of $23,000 or $25,000 is not a whole lot of difference. We'd maximize this man as far as...
Is there introduction on this resolution? Mr. Lynch, is there a second? Mr. Welling, second. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go on to resolution 2137. Mr. Bowe, you read that title for us, please.
Your Honor, this resolution approves and authorizes the final plat for the Maverick Evanston Edition, which is a subdivision within the city as more particularly described in the resolution.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacobson.
Okay, thank you, mayor and council, for adding this to the agenda. This is a, an expansion of the use of the Maverick store on County Road. We received the proposal about two years ago. The project was put on hold, and they, they were working on some other stores, expansion of other stores within the region. They are now ready to go with their improvements that they were proposing back then, so they're really excited to get the subdivision approved as soon as possible so they could do that. The subdivision is a minor subdivision. It proposes to combine the property located at 535 County Road, in which the store is currently located, and there's an adjacent lot that they had purchased at 527 County Road that had a house. That house was demolished back when they had purchased the property a couple of years ago. So, as I said, they are proposing to expand the gas station use to that property to the south, adding additional fuel pumps. There is also an RV cleanout station that's proposed in the lower southwest corner of that property at six, or 527 County Road. So that, that's the purpose for doing the subdivision. The county shows this parcel, county map server shows it as three separate tax ID parcels. In, in the title report we received, there are two parcels, but the area that's highlighted is what we're proposing to combine those parcels into a one-lot subdivision, which will be the Maverick Evanston Edition. The property at 535 County Road is owned highway business, and the property at 527 County Road is owned industrial established, so we have two different zoning classifications. We do not need to do a zone change for this proposal, because the gas station use is a permitted use in both, both zoning districts. Happens to be, too, that the minimum lot size requirement for a lot in the industrial zone and the highway business zone is 6,000 square feet. So with the combination of this, the two properties into one lot, the lot size is going to comply with our minimum lot size requirements of our city code. If you can transfer to the next, so this is the final plat. They had to do a couple of amendments to the plat, in which we received it yesterday, and if you can go to the next one and zoom where it zooms up. So the area, there, there are some utility easements with this plat. The shaded blue areas are, are sewer easements. There is a 10-foot sewer easement that branches off...
...to the south, and a 20-foot sewer easement, sewer line that takes off to County Road and then up to the northwest part of the site.
There is also a 10-foot power easement that bisects, kind of runs along the old lot boundaries, where there's some existing power utilities within that. And then the perimeter will have a 10-foot public utility easement platted with it as well. There is a little notch in the top end, a modus here, and a recent Y-light there. They have an existing, I think it's a double pole sign structure, single pole or double pole sign structure within that, so that, that allows them to continue to maintain that pole sign structure outside of a utility easement. So that would be also in compliance with our city code. There, there is a, there, there are existing sewer and water services that run to the lot to the, or parcel to the south. Those will need to be capped. As I mentioned, there is the, the RV dump station they're proposing in this corner here. What they are proposing to do is, is get rid of the old service and put in a new service, so it's just kind of a swap-out. So the city staff is not recommending that additional service fees or connection fees be paid for that, where it's just a swap-out. So there, there was some discussion about relocating some of the power company's utilities and reconfiguring that power easement that's showing in the orange. They, they have worked, worked that out with the power company, so all of our utility providers, Rocky Mountain Power, Dominion, Century Link, All West Communications, they've all reviewed the subdivision as being proposed tonight, and there are no, everyone is okay with that, so. So the City Subdivision Review Committee, city staff have reviewed the subdivision. They have made corrections as offered in our comments to them, and so this plat does represent the recommendations of city staff and the City Subdivision Review Committee. I have some recommendations for approval, that the cap and, cap the existing water and sewer service connections to 527 County Road per the requirements of the City of Evanston Public Works Department. And there is still a, the current title report that we received for this includes Zion's First National Bank as a mortgagee, and they are working to remove that as, as fast as they can. So I, I would suggest holding off on signing the plat until we get the amended title report on that, that removes them from the plat. Other than that, same condition, as soon as they complete those conditions, we'll go ahead and issue a building permit for them to go ahead with their expansion.
So there is a mortgage on the, on the property? Is that what, has been?
Yeah, the current, current title report shows that there is a mortgage on the property. Their legal staff have sent me an email saying that it's, it's been paid off. They've, they've got other properties that it's been attached to as well, and they've been working in removing them from all of those properties, so.
Okay, excellent.
We, hopefully, will receive that within the next week or so, I'm hoping.
Questions for Mr. Jacobson before we move on?
How many spotted, how many lanes for the RV dump, do you know? So monitor.
I, yeah, it's just the one, one lane.
Is there introduction on this resolution?
Mr. Rothley.
Mr. Perk, seconding. Any discussion?
That'll be an improvement for that area down there.
I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's, yes.
Wish him well.
Absolutely. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? That is approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Comments from departments? Chief Kirby, do you have anything for us tonight? Ms. Lim? Mr. O'Neill? Mr. Ehlers?
The festival is coming soon, I just want you to beware and start getting geared up.
Okay, so, sounds good. Appreciate that.
The bare meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
No, sir.
Anything more for us, Duane, Mr. Jacobson? Ms. Harris? Mr. Bowe?
I have nothing more.
Excellent. Public participation, is there anyone here from the public that would like to address the council for any reason? Well, glad to have you, whether you spoke or not, we're glad to have you. If there's nothing else, we'll adjourn, thank you.